Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Education, December 6, 2017, to order. Do we have a motion to go into a brief executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? We will go into executive session, be back hopefully in five minutes.
Sure.
Talk amongst yourselves. I would like to call back into order the December 6, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is the mission statement of our school district. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire our passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Recognition of the Michael J. Fitzhugh Jr., Fire Safety Poster Contest winners, one of the more enjoyable events for us.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Hubert. For those of you who are up behind me, please excuse my back, it's a little awkward. What a great night. I'm so happy to be here to recognize the accomplishments of the students. My name's Frank Scalanti. For those of you that do not know me, I'm the Director of Security and Emergency Preparedness here at Monroe Woodbury. It's an exciting job, I'm very happy to be here. Mike J. Fitzhugh was a special person. He had the job before I got the opportunity to work here. He was a big part of the Fire Safety Poster Contest. He worked well with the fire departments, we continue that tradition, and we honor him by having this contest every year, which is a great way for our community to get together to work with our fire departments and first responders, and also give the students an opportunity to learn about fire safety amongst other things. So during the year, and in October, we recently did it, the firemen came, they went out to the schools, they used their own time, many of them have full-time jobs, they're all volunteers, like our Board of Education, and they dedicate themselves to take the time off, to spend it at the schools, and teach the kids, pull up the fire trucks, and show them, you know, the concepts and all the good important stuff that they should know regarding fire safety. So we really thank them and appreciate them. I'd like to especially thank our principals, Karen Brock, Christopher Berger, Brian Jades, Joe Cotto, and Rebecca Rodriguez from the five elementary schools that participated. I'd like to thank our Superintendent Elsie Rodriguez and our Cabinet for always supporting safety, especially fire safety and all types of safety, it's tremendous. And I'd like to also thank the Woodbury Fire Police Chief, George Seward, who's here tonight, and we'd like to have Chief Seward, please come on up, give him a round of applause. The chief coordinates everything for us for both Monroe, Woodbury, and Fire Districts. We thank him, we thank his staff, and I thank you so much for being here this evening to celebrate with us and the students. Thank you, chief. At this time, and thank you for our two board trustees, Dan Israedi and Sanjay Akumar, who are up here helping me give out these beautiful trophies we have for the poster winners. From Sapphire Elementary School, please come on up when you hear your name and accept your trophy, Olivia Arroyo.
And you can stay?
Keep them up there.
People stay up.
Keep them up there facing forward. Also, from Sapphire Elementary School, Reagan Diablo, Reagan. Also from Smith Clove, Mia Benquith. From Central Valley Elementary School, Sergio Caputo. Also from Central Valley, Hector Ruiz. Also from Central Valley, Regan Gibson. And finally, from Central Valley Elementary School, Connor Sheehan. Pine Tree Elementary School, Scarlett Toban. Also from Pine Tree, Callie Catalano. And from Pine Tree, Ruby Lee. Finally, from Pine Tree, Ashley Malley. From North Main Elementary School, Julia Wittenberg. Ladies and gentlemen, there you have it. Let's give them a big round of applause. Please stand by for some pictures. And thank you very much for everybody. Thank you.
[inaudible]
All right, one more thing and then I'm out of here.
Good job, guys.
[inaudible]
Are friends good? I think we're great. Awesome, congratulations.
Order in the court.
This is an accident against my client.
A couple of things. Please be quiet, sir. Please be quiet, sir. Thank you.
My client.
Goodbye, sir. Nice to meet you. Goodbye.
The First Amendment applies to the school.
Thank you.
The First Amendment applies.
Goodbye. Appreciate you coming by. While we take a break, students are allowed to pick up your posters if you wish, and the North Main artwork is hanging around the auditorium, hanging around, is hanging in the auditorium. So please, please take a look, and behind us are two large thank you cards from Board Appreciation Week 2, if you want to take a look at that, we're very appreciative of that. We're going to take a short break so that people can pick up their posters, and students from the high school, we will sign your, the documents you brought showing that you were here, and we will in five or so minutes return for the rest of the board meeting. Thank you.
[inaudible]
We're back. With questions and comments from interested citizens that have to do with non-specific personnel issues. Amy Abrahams.
We would first like to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity to speak. We want to thank Monroe Woodbury for the years of service dedicated to our children. We want to thank the Special Ed Department for giving Hayden Skills to succeed. During the years at Monroe Woodbury, he was introduced in 4th grade to the alto sax. Since then, music has become a part of him. Hayden not only plays the sax, but also the guitar. For Hayden, music just became a natural fit in his life. He carried his instrument like it was attached to him. He was introduced to tenor sax in 6th grade, and we witnessed Hayden work his way to the wind ensemble in 9th grade. Hayden has been going to North Main for community service every week for three years, and has completed his hours for his comprehensive diploma. Nevertheless, he continues to go to North Main because he wants to. With that said, you may ask why we are here today speaking with you. On October 11th, Hayden boarded the same bus from the high school that we just mentioned to go to North Main, as he normally does every week. After he sat down on the bus, the driver asked Hayden to move his instrument next to him, and of course Hayden did so respectfully. The bus driver, for some reason, decided to call the bus garage to ask if Hayden could have the saxophone on the bus. Someone from the bus garage said, "No, he cannot." Hayden was asked by the driver to leave, and he asked why, respectfully. She perceived Hayden to be difficult because he asked the question, and she called security. He was removed from the bus, and he was humiliated. There was no explanation or other to say that you are not allowed on the bus with the instrument. The driver was not respectful of Hayden at all. I was called and asked to pick Hayden up. We called the bus garage and we asked for help. We were told that he can't, they can't help us. They also told us that a piece of baggage bigger than a trumpet case was not allowed on the bus. Then why is it okay for our kids to carry baseball bats, lacrosse sticks, all kinds of things onto the bus? After we emailed various district personnel, Dr. Hassler, thank you, assured us he was going to investigate the situation. After several days, we got word from Dr. Hassler that Hayden would not be, have to be concerned with his bringing his instrument on the bus anymore. In conclusion, we feel that two important points need to be made. First and foremost, Hayden deserves an apology, because quite frankly, none of that, none of this should have happened. And secondly, linked to that point is the fact that Hayden was treated disrespectfully, not only by the bus driver, but others. There has to be some type of protocol taken when it comes to school personnel being a bit more sensitive to our students. We thank the Board again and wish all of you a wonderful, happy, healthy holiday season. Now Hayden has something to say.
Hi, I'm Hayden. I started my journey here at Monroe Woodbury 11 years ago as a, as a special ed student. I received services from classroom, speech, and physical therapy. As each year went on, my services started to lessen. There are many people whom have helped and encouraged me along the way. Mrs. Reynolds, Mrs. Petriceto, Mrs. Torella, Mr. Casio, Mrs. Robinson, and Mrs. Reagan. And a big shout out to Mrs. Reagan for always having my back. On November 9th, I started the process of being declassified, which means I no longer needed most of the support and services. On November 15th, I was moved to a new math class without either my parents or myself being notified. Why did this happen? I felt very disrespected. How can we prevent this from occurring again for another student in the future? With that, at this time, I would like to respectfully ask for a chair on the Board next year to represent our special ed population. I feel my experiences with my own disabilities and the overall lack of follow-up the school has shown will make me an asset to the Board. Thank you and have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hassler, because he has been working with Mrs. Abrams, and there has been some follow-up on the incident, so I'd like him to speak.
Sure. What we did following the situation that the Abrahams described, we got a group of us together, because obviously we want to make sure that our kids are safe on the school bus, but we want to make sure that it is done in a manner that doesn't in any way impact our programs or the experiences that our kids are experiencing within our schools. The group consists of myself, Mr. Cahill, Ms. Russell, the Director of Transportation, Ms. Reagan, the Director of Music, Ms. Hock, the Director of Athletics, to sit and discuss the various circumstances that we, you know, experienced in that, in that situation. When we come to a solution in terms of making sure that we have a safe practice with regards to what is allowed and what's not allowed on the school bus, I think the key is making sure that we appropriately communicate that to everybody, so that way we don't experience the situation that was described here today. So, once that solution is arrived, that, that's, the solution's going to be communicated to everybody before we have a final practice that's put in place.
Thank you.
May I say something? When I called and I asked for help, no one would help. And that was really disturbing to me. As a parent, our kids should get on the bus like they normally do every day. And when they told me no, I had no choice but to drive Hayden. And that's not fair, and that's not right. We called and we asked for help, and someone should have said, "I'm going to help you." Except Dr. Hassler finally stepped in and did help. But we shouldn't, as a parent, when we call and we ask or need of help, someone should step in. We have a big school, a lot of people should be able to help us. This should not have happened, after years of Hayden carrying the instrument onto the bus, years.
Thank you, and I agree. And I just had a conversation with somebody else today about a lack of response to an issue. So this is, you know, one instance, a couple of instances, but if this is, you know, if this is a pattern, it definitely needs to be looked into, because it's not acceptable. You're absolutely correct. And I apologize for, for the incident that happened. But much more important is trying to put in some sort of procedure so that it doesn't happen again. Thank you for coming and taking the time and the energy and the courage perhaps to stand up and talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Lorraine Loning.
Good evening, my name is Lorraine Loning. I'm a district resident, I'm a mom of two boys, one who graduated a few years back, and an 11th grader right now. I'm also a district employee. This evening, I would like to talk about freedom of information. I'm an active citizen. My eldest son is an active citizen. It is not unusual to see one or both of us at Town Board, Village Board, School Board, Zoning Board, Planning Board, County Board, public hearings, you get the idea, if there's a meeting, we go. My calendar is filled with them. Part of that activism also includes requesting documents from time to time. It's a right which is granted to citizens by the Freedom of Information Act, that's effective July 5, 1967. Wow, I'm older than that. My experience with foiling is that while all governments state a love of openness and transparency, some would really prefer if no one looked under the hood or kicked the tires. And sometimes barriers are put up so gaining information can be difficult or confusing. I think the school board could do a better job with that. On the district website, there is no mention of freedom of information. There's no link or page or whatever the right jargon is that will direct you to information about foiling the district. I'm requesting that you create one. A lot of local governments had that. It should include a form for requesting documents and policies surrounding these requests, timeframes for deliveries and fees, and I'm going to talk more about that in a second. Currently, when my son or I want to foil the district, we email the district clerk, and a few weeks later, documents are emailed to us. Some recent requests that we've done, recently we requested legal invoices related to labor negotiations. We also requested petitions for board members, and we wanted to see who signed their petitions. And they were delivered to us, there's public documents, and they were delivered to us. Tonight, I'm acting as a proxy for my son, who can't be here because he's away at university. Jason recently submitted a foil request. He requested documents related to renovations at the ed center, this very building. He requested invoices, including but not limited to labor materials, furniture. He also requested timesheets or vouchers or however you manage track, keep track of time, for any district resources that were pulled away from their regularly assigned duties to come here for renovations. This includes custodians, security, building and grounds, and any other people. He also wanted to know what budget code these renovations came out of. This request was submitted at the end of September. It's now the beginning of December, and he still does not have the documents he requested. He has been in communication with the clerk, and she's been very helpful, and has told him the request is being worked on, over two months. About two weeks ago, the clerk emailed Jason to tell him that the request was partially done, and that to date, the fee for copying was $22. A fee for copying ordinary business documents in 2017 is ridiculous. Sorry, guys, it's ridiculous. It's a throwback to an earlier decade, a relic. In the age of where documents are routinely scanned and emailed, having a copy fee is akin to having a typewriter ribbon tax or a carbon paper surcharge, okay? It just doesn't exist anymore. It's completely outdated. So, and other local governments, and actually the state agencies I foil, also send me these emails free of charge. So, this evening, in the spirit of open and transparent government, I'm asking this Board to waive the outdated copy fee for Jason's request. And as a matter of policy, I am asking that the fee for ordinary business documents to be scanned and emailed to individuals putting in foil requests be eliminated. Many of this Board's members were endorsed by a party whose mantra is accountability, civility, and transparency. The elimination of this fee would be honoring the spirit of that mantra. Thank you.
Thank you. Update on questions or comments raised from interested citizens? Any from previous?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I met with, last week, we had a parent get up and speak about her concerns about bullying. I met with her today, we had a very good conversation. She shared some of her concerns, but I think the bigger piece is that she wants to be, she wants to work with the district, and I invited her to be, to participate. We'll, we'll talk later about our strategic plan, but I said one, one of the pieces would be bullying and how to better roll out different programs, and I said that I would invite her to be a part of it, and she was very gracious, and she said that she would participate. So there was a follow-up. I did meet with a parent, I did speak with her for about an hour and a half today.
And I presume there'll be a follow-up to what Lorraine said, asked tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education, Wednesday, November 29?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the first reading of the following policy manual updates. Let's get a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
What are the?
These first reading is, we took about six or seven old policies, and we combined them all into two policies, making it a little bit easier to more coherent, everything is in the same spot. So, the new policy is going to be 5675 and Policy 8270. They will consist of confidential and computerized information, use of emails in the school district, standards of guidelines for webpage publishing, social media guidelines for professional use, staff use of computerized information and resources, et cetera. So Bogoff and I did most of the work, and the legal, they came and they put all the jargon together and combined these policies to make it a little bit easier. One of these policies, a main thing in here, is the updating of password updates for the people that work in the district, that they're now going to have to start updating their password every 120 days, so that there is no chance of somebody getting in there to, you know, get some information. So that's something on the teachers and administrative staff, I'm giving you the heads-up now, that you will be getting notifications in your system, that your password is 10 days till it terminates, six days, five days, four days, whatever, it's going to be a hassle for Bogoff and for yourself if you don't change it. So try to keep up with what, what's going on, so that there is no problem with the internet world out there that we're now turning into. For the district, the community at large, or the school district, I just want to add that we had some talk about stealing and breaching of information. We have not had any breaches in our school district, but other things have happened, and we're trying to combat that ahead of time. At no time, if anybody in the district supposedly contacts you to ask you via phone or email about your child in the district, about their social security number, about their date of birth specifically, or any, their address, you should not be answering any of those type emails. You should not be sending them, that's really for the parents, you know, you should not be sending back a response, giving somebody any information about your child, because we at the school do not give out any information about your child. So just so you know, we would never call in that manner to request some arbitrary information, so just be aware. So these two policies are going to take over that, and then the second reading coming up next is one that we've had about breaching information, about distributions.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading, so carried. Second reading of the policy manual update regarding information on security breach and notification. Have we had any?
I don't believe.
No, I haven't had anybody breach.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have, moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Energy Conservation Program presentation by Mrs. Jill Parasella and Ken Daubert.
And John, if I may, you've introduced Ken and Jill, they're going to talk about our Energy Conservation Program. Jill and Ken are part-time employees, and they've been with the district since, I think, March 2016, they've been managing the program. They're going to give us an update on the program, and primarily focus on last year, the last fiscal year, '16, '17, and the performance of the program for that year. So, with that, I give you Ken and Jill.
Thank you, sir. Go up here.
All right, so, November 4, it's the April recap of the program. The contract start date was August 2013, and at that time, the district set out to hire an energy specialist. I guess it got sidetracked, and it took a while to hire the first specialist. They came on board in October 2014. That put the performance year of the program, January through December. So, the performance years for the program are January, but we are reporting on the last fiscal year of the district, because we won't have all of the data for the performance year until February or March, and we didn't want the Board to have to wait that long for another update. But we can report on the performance year once all the data's in. It takes about two months or so to get all the bills in. So, recup- So, recuper was the first energy specialist and he retired in October 2015 and Ken and I came onboard in March of 2016. So, we're here now and the contract end date is December 2018 when the payments to synergistic will cease and fall off and those payments that are coming out of the program savings now will become net savings for the program.
All right. So, and we're going to go back and forth just to keep you all interested, all right? So, our first and most important goal is that we have a very good working environment in our schools for our students and our staff. I want you all to know, every time I go in a building, the first thing I do is ask whoever I'm talking to, how's everything going? Is everything comfortable in the building before I even start to do my measurements? And I've had very good feedback that most people are extremely happy with the way things have been going. We go into the staff meetings, we go into the classrooms, we're trying to educate everyone to have that culture of conservation awareness. And it's not hard because most people really do get it and they do want to be very aware of saving energy. So, that's a point in our favor and it helps the program. Our goal is to verify that we're setting all the equipment and all the controls by our HVAC specialists and by our control specialists to eliminate any energy waste wherever that energy waste is. And that's mostly in the unoccupied times of the schools. And last, you'll see, the money we save go to education, not to the utility companies.
Good idea.
Before we jump into exactly what the savings are and where the program stands, I just want to refresh your memory on the things that impact our energy use because things, changes that happen will impact how much energy we use in the savings that we garner then. So, weather and temperature is always something that's going to affect what we use. So, if we have, you know, a colder year, we're going to use more energy. If we use more energy, we have more opportunity to save energy. So, last year, the last school year, was about 8% colder in the winter than the previous year. So, we used maybe a little bit more energy. There is no change really in cooling days in the summer, so the energy use should have remained pretty stable. So, we were able to impact it and reduce it. And then, the cost of commodities will affect energy use. Now, electric cost remains stable, but natural gas has risen and a little bit, about 15% market price. Now, we have contracts that lock us into our natural gas and electric supply. So, the supply portion of it is going to remain fixed because we, we lock in at a, at a really good rate. So, even though natural gas on our contract has risen also, it's still lower than the market price. So, that's really good. The delivery of the utility, however, that will fluctuate based on our use and demand. And then, equipment and mechanical changes. All the boilers were serviced this past summer. All of them, for the first time, got done at once and so that'll help us be more efficient. We're working on LED lamp changeovers in all the buildings, inside and outside where we can. It's not going to happen all at once because we're doing it in-house to reduce costs and there's a really quick payback on those, so we like to keep that rolling. And then, technology is always being added. So, that kind of, there's about 4% load creep is what we call the, the technology that's put into the buildings each year. Maybe a little more here because Bogoff is very, you know, excited with the technology. So, the things that we do to, to, to go with that, yeah, we're using more for the equipment, but we're also using more energy to cool, like, server rooms and things like that. And then, building changes. The Harriman Center, we evacuated as an office and we're unoccupying it now, so we're going to step back the temperature and that's something that, that'll save us money. What happens with the building down the road is up to the district and then it gets decided on, you know, if, if they end up selling the building, it's removed from the program, obviously. And so, it probably won't stay in the program because we're not going to use it for the district, probably. So, it might end up being like Sapphire Dorm where we eliminate it as a no-loss, no-gain part of the program. So, we won't recoup savings from that any longer. This is just a visual of our utility cost distribution for the last month of the year. You can see that, not including water and sewer, our utility spending was about 1.2 million and the natural gas was only a small portion of it, about 22%. Electricity is the biggest portion. And actually, we have like a sliv of oil in there. It's like less than 1% because this building uses oil. It's the only building that's still on oil. But it's very little compared to the whole district. And the only other oil that we sometimes will use is, some of our meters are on interruptible gas. So, sometimes we test the lines, so we'll shut off the gas and turn on oil for a few hours and then turn it back to the gas. So, we're on interruptible gas, meaning we can switch back and forth because it gets us a lower rate because then we're beholden to the utility company. If they say, hey, we have a shortage of gas, you guys have to switch to oil, we have to do it. Some of our meters are not interruptible. They're firm and they have a slightly higher rate because of that. This is our program savings as it stands now. The lifetime savings for the program are about $706,000, which is about 10% savings over what would have been spent had the district not been running an energy conservation program. And the last school year, the savings were about $216,000, which is about 14.5%. And our summer savings were about $50,000, which is really good, much better than last year. It's 23% cost avoidance. So, you can see that the, our cost avoidance percentages are going up. They're trending in the right direction because they get factored into the whole lifetime of the program, the whole average. It's, it's a little lower because there's a lot of time when the district didn't have an energy specialist. But they are trending in the right direction. And you can see that this graph, this pie chart right here, this is the utility cost and the program savings. And this, this sliv here that is the program savings, are, are, all our costs of the program come out of this. So, our synergistic fees for consulting come out of this, our salaries come out of this, any cost for the program come out of this. So, once the contract ends with them, this whole piece of the pie is going to be just net savings for, for the district. So, I mean, the whole thing is what's spent on utilities and you can see, it's a pretty good chunk that we can save.
Okay, the next chart you see, not to belabor where we're going, but to show you the positive results, is the last three years. The 2014-15 year, which is the blue, 1516, which is the yellow, and our year that we're reporting on, which is the green. And you can see that we've been able to continuously lower our energy use over the past three years. You do see that abnormal spike there. That was in every school's charts. We checked a bunch of other schools. That was the really bad winter in 1415 where we had the polar vortex came down and the energy cap didn't, didn't compensate quite for that because of the level of that, that program. But just to show you in real, real means that the program's going in the right direction. We keep drifting down with our energy use.
And what Ken means by, by it didn't account for is that we didn't make an extra adjustment to the data because of the weather, because it didn't exceed the, the parameter of the E-cap bounds when it does the linear regression and it adjusts for weather today versus weather in the baseline. It didn't exceed those parameters, so we didn't make another adjustment for it. So, it hurts the program in taking away savings, but it's, we didn't, you know, there's no, there was no fudging going on. That's all raw consumption data.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is any of these numbers, is the Harriman Dorm involved in this number? Or was the Harriman Dorm open and in this, in this evaluation?
Yes.
It was open, but in this, you're not seeing the Harriman Dorm because it was taken out, we took it out of the program.
That's what I'm asking. So, so the 706 of kit fee, oh, Sapphire Dorm, sorry. The 706 in savings is, doesn't have that in there?
Right.
Because that's a huge chunk once you shut it off.
No.
There is nothing in there about the Sapphire Dorm.
Okay.
None of that.
And this is just another, another visual. So, you can see that like where we are here is we're still paying synergistic fees. They will fall off in another year and then this will be all net savings to the districts and our cost for the program will then remain level. So, they'll plateau and our net savings will increase. So, it's only going to get better once we get to keep all of our savings.
All right. So, besides the money, why are we investing in this? Well, we all know that it's a really good thing to reduce our carbon footprint. We all know that we're doing this for our children and our children's children. We have now saved in the program the equivalent of over 2,000 tons of CO2 from going in the atmosphere, or the equivalent of 450 cars being driven on the road for a year, or 230 homes being powered for one year, or my favorite, we have planted more than 50,000 trees and taken that carbon out of the atmosphere. And one of my favorite people, Carl Sagan, who is an amazing scientist and educator, when asked the question, what can one person do to help save the world? One person can plant a tree. And we planted 50,000 of them with this program.
So, the exciting news tonight is that the district applied for and earned Energy Star certifications for four of our school buildings. Now, the Energy Star certification is a, it's a prestigious award given by the EPA for buildings that meet very stringent criteria and it's, they're ranked against all other buildings nationwide. So, to get the certification, a building has to apply and in doing so, you fill out a ton of paperwork and you have to have professional engineers come and measure your air quality, your equipment, your lighting levels, your carbon monoxide, all that stuff. And the building has to be, in energy use, better than 75% of all similarly attributed buildings nationwide. So, our high school had to be more efficient than 75% of all other high schools that size with that energy use, with that student population across the nation. So, four of our buildings got the Energy Star and it was the high school, the middle school, North Main and Smith Clover. The other schools, although they didn't get the Energy Star certification this year, it's not for their lack of trying, it's not for their leadership. The people are doing fantastic.
Yes, they are.
It's, we have building systems that aren't necessarily as efficient and they need work and the building systems play a huge part in energy consumption, obviously, and efficiency. So, it's not for lack of trying for the people because everybody's doing fantastic.
We're pretty sure we'll get a permit.
And we're reapplying, you have to reapply every year, so we're reapplying next year and it's only going to get better, hopefully all of them next year. But four of them got them this year. We have their certifications from the EPA, they get an E-cap for their buildings. So, very exciting.
Do we have to reapply for the, for buildings that achieved Energy Stars?
Yes.
So, it's an annual process?
Yeah.
Do I have to reapply for my refrigerator?
Yeah.
I'd just like to comment that three of those buildings are probably the oldest in the district.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, Central Valley Elementary, you said doesn't, has substandard equipment. How is that really possible if North Main is the oldest building in the community?
It may not have substandard equipment, it may have substandard, the way the equipment is being used and the way, and there might be pneumatic air leaks throughout the, there are pneumatic air leaks throughout the building. It's just how the systems have been maintained, prevent maintenance that's gone into them and just how they're compared to, it's not, they're not compared against each other, they're compared against the same type of building nationwide.
So, do you get a report from them of what's wrong? And do we have like a checklist on how we're starting to fix all this or we just?
We have the audit list on what's wrong and what needs to be fixed.
Yes.
These are the first five things that need to be fixed down the line and we're working on it. Like, did we give it to anybody or are we just, like, are you guys, I'm just curious, I want to make sure something's getting done about it, that's all.
Right. We have audit reports and Buildings and Grounds has pre-audit reports and the, the work logs on what's being done and everything.
We want all the buildings to have that.
Correct.
And those things are being factored into what's, what's the priority with the five-year plan and the cabinet work coming up. Those things, it's all being considered. Are we good?
Thank you.
All right. And without question, this program would not work without everyone in this district caring about it, from the superintendent.
I do my job.
I know.
You check on me every day.
Down to every staff member, including the students. And we want to thank them sincerely because we get nothing but positive feedback from all our staff. And without our Buildings and Grounds guys working out there, doing everything they do, and our custodians shutting everything down at 12:00 midnight, and our teachers, I, I walk the halls now and so many classrooms, the lights are out. The teachers are sitting by the windows when there's no students in there with the sun hitting their face and they look so good. And it amazes me because that's not the way it was when I first started the program.
They're getting vitamin D, that's why they look good.
And I just see an improvement. And what I also see is an improvement that I think we're going to bring the students more and more involved in this. And Warwick goes online in a couple of days with their solar farm. I know. But they're going to involve their students in the learning process of that. And we can involve our students in the learning process also, even with our solar panels on the top of the high school.
Yep.
So, those are the things we want to try to get involved with. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, we know how personally you take this because I remember last board meeting we had, I think it was at North Main last November, we, we were particularly late. We had an executive meeting in a, in a conference room and all of a sudden, out of the blue, no, we don't think anyone's in the building, the door opens and here's Ken starting to shut the lights on us. We appreciate you and applaud your efforts.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
My computer.
You did.
Any reports by the Board of Education? No, not, we, it almost seems as though we saw each other last week.
We did.
Oh.
We did.
We had a meeting.
Any reports?
We had a meeting in between that week.
All right.
We did. We did.
No re-early reports. We're working on it. A few other things with Bogoff and we have some other district policies concerning us, the board, that are we working on. And that's it. Our next meeting is January 4, 10 o'clock.
Is it 10?
Sanjana, do you have a, a report?
Yes.
Wow.
Am I allowed?
A report a week? Yes, you're allowed.
You're speedy.
It's not a very big one, so.
You're right, 10 o'clock. That is it, Sanjana.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a, we'll get back to you. Did you have a facilities meeting?
I'm more than happy to wait till after.
All right.
So, I can point to Patrick and say what's happening.
Okay.
Since last week, very little.
I can't do it.
It's one, yeah. There you go.
I love these guys.
I love people.
Okay. This is mainly just here so I can show some pictures of my friends. So, I got to go to North Main on Monday and I really, really enjoyed my time there. Thank you to Mr. Coe and Ms. Davis for allowing me to walk around the building and get to know the students there. They were just really interested in being involved, not only in their school, but in their community, which I genuinely appreciated. They're working with their administration to create a civic club and a debate team. So, they can learn those kinds of skills that they understand that they're going to need in middle school, in high school. It's a lot of awareness about what they want to do in the future, which I really much appreciate it. Another aspect that I picked up from these students is that they really want to focus on unity and understanding. on unity and understanding one another. Many students brought up the idea of promoting a culture day or a heritage day, and I think that was very interesting coming from the mind of an elementary student, because it really emphasized the fact that they want to know each other and they want to understand each other. They were like, we can dress up in clothes and we can bring in food that you made for my heritage. And I think it really focused on the fact that they understand that they're all different, but they're all in the same situation, they're all together. And then the third thing that we really talked about was they're most excited for at North Main is Susie Coe Jr. This personally very much touched my heart as I am a big fan of theater as well, I'm very much involved in it. And so I just was personally very excited to have them be so excited about it, because it's, it's just a genuine passion of mine. But I very much enjoyed my time at North Main, I didn't get too much, it was only a week, sorry about that. But that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Don, I apologize profusely for snubbing you.
No need.
But I didn't think there was a facilities meeting, but there might have been facilities gossip?
There's gossip, I think Patrick might have taken one or two phone calls, I don't know.
Well, we did have a meeting with the DOT on Monday, and they sort of briefed us on the new plan, the diverging diamond interchange plan. And my takeaway, and Elsie and I have both been in communication with different officials at DOT, was the impact for the district, you know, in terms of our property loss and all that is, would be pretty much the same, if not slightly less property would be taken. And, you know, we're, we're going to continue to have some meetings, the contractor was at that meeting, Yonkers Contractor, Contracting, rather. I was a little concerned because there were a few elements in our, our list of requests and concerns that he didn't seem to be fully aware of, but it kind of may have been putting him on the spot at that moment, but we're going to follow up. And what, what I had said to the DOT engineer that I spoke to today, sort of the liaison that I deal with, is we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, meaning the district, DOT, and Yonkers Contracting, that we're all in agreement with, you know, the, the needs that we have to mitigate the impact and what they agreed to do for us, and that we're all on the same page and, and, you know, understanding the same thing. So, that's the update, really.
And I did speak with Scott Geiger, and my question to Scott was, this has been in the works for several years, what is the compensation to the district for the property that they're taking? He has assured me that they are, they have finalized the number and that we would be informed in, you know, the third week of December. I did ask him if we did not appreciate the number, what would be the course of action? And he said, well, then there would have to be a back and forth. He, he didn't tell me how much money we would get as far as compensation for all the things that we've listed, but I did want to make him aware that the project is supposed to start in January and be completed October 2019, which is a very short period of time, and that, you know, they may be breaking ground, but still the district doesn't know how they're going to be compensated for the property. So he understood the urgency and we should be speaking with him within the next week or so.
So there'll be back and forth, sounds like.
Yes.
And I think there's two forms of compensation. There are the things they agreed to, the improvements, which are valuable, to reconstruct the entire parking area of CV, the front of that, to enlarge and improve the parking area near the tennis court, to add a parking lot, like an athletic parking lot that would be west of the existing athletic parking lot that would be knocked out, to build us an access road 24 feet wide with electronic gates at either side, you know, so there's some valuable things that's going to connect CV to, or Route 32 to the high school. So there's that. And, and then there's the monetary compensation, which would be related to land that they're taking, impacts, we're losing the use of a field in the front of CV, you know, and a few other, we're losing the athletic parking area, approximately 100 spaces. So those all, those things can be quantified, and they will be. And, and so there's, there's two aspects to it, so that's what Elsie's referring to, compensatory.
Right, and, and, and we also spoke about, we talked about three things that we're concerned, obviously it's going to be during the construction phase, the air quality around Central Valley, the impact that it can have on instruction, and then of course, transportation. Because our concern is that while this is going on, it's going to have an impact on transportation. So we talked about that we need to ensure that there's good communication, that we know what's going on so we can share with the community, and they have assured me that they're going to do that. They actually hired a communications firm that will be situated in the Harriman Commons. So they've taken up two offices during the construction phase, so if the school district or anybody in the community has a concern, they have a place to go. So there's, there's a lot of communication, although initially when the governor unveiled his design, it, we felt like we weren't a part of that. And they did apologize for that, but since then, they have come back and they have, you know, displayed all of the, the changes and explained how this diamond interchange will, will work. They do have, so just for the public, on September 14th at Central Valley at 7 o'clock, did I say September?
Yeah.
Oh my goodness, I'm traveling back and...
The Harriman Common? Did you mean Woodbury Common?
No. December 14th at Central Valley at 7 o'clock. See, they tried to mess me up.
No, but before you said Harriman Common, I just want to make sure.
No, they're situated at the Harriman Commons.
What's the Harriman Commons?
That's a place called, yeah, isn't it called the Harriman Commons?
The shopping center.
Yes, yeah, it's by Outback, that's called Harriman Commons. Just, you didn't know that?
No.
Okay. So, September...
Is there a village called Harriman?
December 14th at 7 o'clock at Central Valley in the cafeteria, they're going to have a public comment section, session. I just want you to know that public, public comment is not the same way that we do it here. They're going to have breakout groups and they're going to allow you to comment in those groups. So it's not like there's going to be a formal like we have in the school district, so just don't be surprised if they move you into groups and then they allow you to share your concerns.
Is there a list or something that the community has to get on to be invited?
No, you don't have to be invited, it's an open meeting and you can show up. I just want to make sure that everyone who's watching, we'll post it on our website as well, but I thought this was a good forum to let everyone know.
Will they have to reroute the cross-country track, too?
Yes, that's part of the...
That's part of the items. I think there's about 25 items.
All right.
A lot of them.
Okay.
I'm going to nature trail.
Thank you.
Good evening. Prior to asking for acceptance of the items under personnel, I would just like to point out, one of the certified appointments tonight is in our audience, a gentleman by the name of Brent VanderWurt, he is being recommended for a part-time physical education teacher at the high school. I'd like him to stand, can you stand up, Brent?
All right.
That's Brent. And aside from that, I'd respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion.
Moved and seconded, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Business and financial, Patrick.
So, John, I would also respectfully ask for the approval of the items under the business and financial section of the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports for October. We're, let's see, we have three items to surplus or be declared obsolete, three vehicles. We have a van, a Chevrolet school bus van with 175,000 miles, two Bluebird buses with 107,000 miles and 96,000 miles respectively. Two donations, sensory room equipment for Central Valley Elementary School from Mrs. L.K. Rittger, and theater spotlights for the middle school from SUNY Orange. So I'd like to thank those folks for those donations, very nice of them. And one contract for occupational therapy services for our special needs students with Jason Mogul.
Do we have a motion?
No.
Moved and seconded, any questions for Patrick? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. The, need a motion for the Committees on Special Education, Preschool, Special Education, items 15.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4 on the agenda.
Motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Reports by board and central office, Chris, anything?
Not much, it was like Groundhog Day last Wednesday, this week's different. I would just, holidays are coming, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone have a safe, healthy holiday, enjoy your families, win your time off, see you in January.
Mr. Beeler.
Happy holidays, like you said, it's only been a week, so.
All right.
He's next.
Suzanne.
I would like to congratulate the fire safety poster contest winners. The kids were amazing, their work is amazing. And I'd also like to thank Ken and Jill for their presentation and wish everyone a happy, safe holiday season.
Thank you. Sanjana.
Yes, I would also like to wish everybody a happy holiday season and a very prosperous New Year. Have a good one.
Prosperous, good.
Is that enough?
Yeah, that's fine. Leah?
I wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Varga.
Happy holidays to everybody. Today, actually, I attended Monroe Woodbury Reads Program at the Sapphire. Mrs. Brock did a good job with Mrs. Bula at the high school. This program actually allows our seniors to read with the kindergarteners. So it was very interesting to see the dynamics between the K and the senior students. And tomorrow, they're coming actually at the Smith Clover as well.
Very good. Eric.
Congratulations also to the bus safety poster winners and congratulations to everybody appointed this evening. And just a reminder that the human rights exhibit is underway at Orange County Community College, I plan on going up tomorrow, and happy holidays.
We have 18 students represented there, correct?
18 students, yep.
Very good. Patrick?
I'd like to thank Ken and Jill for your presentation also, and congratulate everyone who's appointed tonight. Elsie mentioned the DOT meeting next Thursday, right? Week from tomorrow. And one, one final thing that Matt actually pointed out, it was in the New York State School Board's newspaper for November, that the governor had changed the eligible funds exemption to make school districts, give it a local option to opt into that, so check with the local assessors and for the most part, do not offer that exemption. So if you're asked about it, you can refer a question to me, but the eligible funds, veterans exemption is an older exemption, and the towns that our district goes into, for the most part, do not offer that any longer, so that's it.
Thank you.
I don't have much, congratulations to our winners and those appointed tonight, and happy holidays.
Same, congratulations to the winners, it's always great to see the kids. Thank you to Ken and Jill for the presentation, congratulations on the appointments, better known as Coach Van Date to most, but congratulations and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy and healthy New Year to all.
Dan.
Hope everyone in the Monroe Woodbury family has a wonderful, well-deserved vacation.
I do want to point out that we have Christopher, Christopher Doborsky here, who is now going to be taking on a new role as our interim music K-12 director, so I want to welcome you and...
Yay!
We have some big shoes to fill.
What an insult.
Or high heels. I want to congratulate all of our fire poster safety winners, I want to thank Jill and Ken, yeah, I know Ken, Jill and Ken for their presentation. It was a very nice job. And I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays. It's a, it's a good time to take off and be with your family and enjoy the things that are most important to you.
Did you want to mention, Sanjana, what she said to...
You know, you, you, so, I, I do want to make a, I want everyone to know that this week, we had Sanjana present to our administrators, and she did an amazing job. She really is the voice of the students, I know that that, sometimes people don't believe that, but it's, it's really true. She sat in a room with about 25 administrators and talked about the students, and she did an amazing job at representing them and speaking on their behalf. And I was very impressed, so were all the other administrators. And we, and I think that we often talk about kids, but it's when kids talk about themselves that it really matters, just as the gentleman who got up and talked about himself. So I, I just want to say thank you, because you are truly the voice of the students and it is so appreciated and you do an amazing job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think communication throughout the district is so important. The administration, the cabinet needs to know what's happening when, from the people with boots on the ground, shall we say. And so there needs to be an awareness of communication flow-through, back and forth, because that's the way we'll learn things and improve things. So I encourage everyone to speak up, especially in this time of people speaking up. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays to everybody, and we'll see you next year. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel matters? Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.